Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Rockingham County Commissioners Meeting of September nineteen twenty twenty four. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have all three of our commissioners here today. We have Commissioner Cherichello.
Morning.
Commissioner Coyle.
Good morning, everyone.
And myself, Stephen Gardew. So we're in a hundred percent attendance. And we'll start with RFP openings and awards for the electrical upgrades.
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals and return with a recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion?
I love investing in infrastructure.
Commissioner Cherichello.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, housekeeping services.
I move to award the proposal for housekeeping services to an assisted living human resources facilities operation, the delegation building in the Carlisle Building to healthcare services group for an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty nine thousand six hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
Okay, discussion on this?
Just that, I guess the follow-up is that we have already discussed this. It was on the agenda just as a discussion point, so they were, if I recall, the most cost-effective and also have the capacity to expand to the new building should we want to expand that contract.
Well, they were not the least expensive, but it, the way that we got some varied amounts and we liked their proposal the best, I think.
Maybe not least, it's sort of cost-effective.
Cost-effective, yes, I think, I would agree, there's more full-time employees coming in. And I think that's crucial to making sure that we get the service that we need. Chuck, we're okay with the budget on this?
We had budgeted two hundred and sixty-five thousand more lines.
Okay, well, that answers all my questions. Any other discussion? Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, consent agenda.
I move to approve the August twenty ninth, twenty twenty four public and non-public meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes?
I do, I actually have an amendment to the non-public minutes and that's a product of, I think, a motion during that time. And I move to amend the non-public meeting minutes to seal number four, the non-public item number four indefinitely, because it could adversely affect the reputation of someone other than a member of this board. And I, I think probably in the, sometime, it was just an oversight on my part, I don't know how else to.
I'll second that one.
Okay, so I don't recall what item number four was, I don't have it in my hand, did I just have a quick? Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I must, I, I think it just was an oversight, so.
Yeah, okay, I'm good with that. So on the amendment. Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
And I agree, yes. So on the motion to approve the minutes as amended. Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cherichello? And I vote yes. With that amendment. Accounts payable list.
I move to approve the September nineteenth, twenty twenty four accounts payable list total of two million eight hundred and six thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second, oh, sorry.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on accounts payable? All looked in line to me.
Yeah, contracted, I, I'm just happy that, you know, our efforts to really have a closer eye on contracted nursing, because when you look at the, our AP run, so much of it is tied to, I mean, we also have the state bills, so, on this one, but putting, that's a known quantity. Contracted nursing is someplace where we have control and we have to work.
There's a lot of money in that, I agree, and I'm still looking forward to our monthly updates on where we are on that line. And I'm hoping that we're going to go in the other direction by hiring personnel that are ours, but if we need to keep a close watch on it, then I'm good with it. All right. On the motion for accounts payable, Commissioner Cherichello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, Commissioner, updates, anybody have updates they would like to share?
Not too much this week.
No, okay. The next is a discussion on the Exeter Hospital discontinuing the ALS paramedic service. I'll start this discussion, I asked to put it on, I put it on the agenda. What I've, I've spoken to a couple of different fire chiefs that are involved and have been rescued. And what was explained to me is that, and what I've, what I've learned is that there is no degradation in our ability to send ambulance service out. The bus, there's plenty of buses, there's plenty of service for the rescue vehicles. The, the problem that arises is that many of the towns, especially the smaller towns, are not employing paramedics. They're employing EMTs. And so what was happening, what's been happening is they send out the ambulance, the EMTs arrive and they say, oh, this is really serious, we could use the paramedics. They call Exeter, or maybe they know in advance that it's really serious. And Exeter sends somebody with a SUV with one or two paramedics to do the advanced life-saving. And they're only billing the, the fire department's eighty-five dollars for each visit, because they don't have the ability to bill the, the person who was being served, or their insurance company, as is normally the case. So I, I understand why Exeter is having a problem. But nevertheless, the problem really is that we don't have enough paramedics in each of the rescue services. I'm particularly concerned with how that is going to affect us here at the jail and the nursing home. That's of my highest concern, but also for the rest of the residents of Rockingham County. I would like to discuss how we might supplement the ability to have more paramedics. And I'm kind of thinking that maybe there's some grant-writing magic that might be able to occur on that, specifically on that topic. If, if we could find some grants that would allow the EMTs to get, not have to pay for the, the extra education to become a paramedic, we might be able, that might help us increase in the county the number of paramedics that we have available. But I'm open to any and all discussion on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that is the, the critical, it, I mean, boiling it down, there's, to me, two things, two issues, one, the increased cost to, I mean, this is going to put an increased burden on access for DOC nursing home. And then in terms of the, particularly small towns that don't have, don't have access to paramedic services, it's going to be, they're going to be incurring increased costs. I mean, I think that's what, that is the predictable impact. Certainly.
Yeah, EMTs are cheaper than paramedics, so.
Correct, so it's, the question is, I, and I don't know the answer to this, what the, what is the change in training or additional training that's needed? And I don't have that information to go from EMT to paramedics. Is there some sort of, and maybe there are resources, to your point, some grant funding or resources available to, for education to, just like we have LNA classes, if we have this short, is there some sort, you know, could we help have some, you know, try to get a grant funding to do some sort of education credit or things, something like that? So people that we could help pay for education to get from EMT to paramedic. These are all creative, they're, yes, so I think, frankly, at this point, I just am not educated enough to understand what the difference in education requirements are and, you know, what opportunities for schooling are out there. But maybe this is, like, we can work in two, you know, two tracks, one from an HR, I don't mean to add to the HR burden, but, you know, as we look at, when we think about the county and the goals of county government to offer resources, help the, help the towns in ways and the community in ways that, you know, there's not access, right? I mean, that's what our, that is a big portion of what our government is supposed, county government is supposed to do. You know, maybe we can start from a, if you could, we can work two tracks of the grant funding opportunities as well as from a perspective of HR, like, what are the requirements? But I think this is going to be a much longer ongoing conversation about, I'm glad we're starting this conversation now, because it's going to be ongoing about how this whole thing shakes out.
I know, I think Commissioner Cherichello mentioned that Cheshire County put in an EMT service just because they're so far up and they couldn't get stabilization up there. Everything, all those services were going away, so Ken May's HR director up there, and I know she was instrumental in that program along with others, the administrator there putting that together. So I can ask some, just some questions about education, because you're asking what are those requirements and stuff.
When you're asking that, would you clarify whether it's EMT or paramedic service? Because there's, that, that's the significant distinction we need to address. You know, if they have a solution that we can copy, wonderful.
I don't know if they have paramedics, but if they do, it would just give me an idea of what those requirements are for education if someone's an EMT, what additional they need to.
Yeah, and reach out to them against, about their program, if that, you know, something we might, if we're, if it's as critical, is this something we need to start considering? And is this, you know, a prob, you know, this, at this point, it doesn't seem like a problem that's going to go away, so, you know, we don't want to just bury our heads in the sand about it.
Commissioner Cherichello, you have anything you'd like to add?
Sure. So this is sort of like nursing, similar, very similar, that these people that are going to the fire service are, are not also cross-training as paramedics, it's just across the board. But we have a shortage of these people. It's not just Rockingham County, it's statewide. Me, I brought it up at the last meeting, that I think that you're going to see some pressure coming at the county to do something similar to Cheshire County and take that over. I, I sort of have a problem with that because of the, the way that they get paid on some of these Medicaid and Medicare numbers are not good. So a lot of the times, we've got to lose money. And the way I view it is, is we've got this problem with our nursing home, finding the nurses, I, I just really don't want to add extra burden to the county. So, you know, I sort of look at it as more of a local issue, I, I know a lot of these fire departments will actually have mutual aid and can work together. I don't think it's something that the county should necessarily take on. Again, we've got our own issues that we need to deal with, but it's unfortunate this has happened. I do agree with you that is, we have to deal with the jail, the jail issue and, and transporting from our end, I, I get that, but, I don't know what the answer is either, it's not going to be a quick fix, it's, but, but before one, you're going to get pressure.
Okay, so, I, I, I agree, I'm not interested in expanding to have a paramedic service that comes out of Rockingham County that we're supervising and, you know, responsible for, but we certainly can encourage others. But I am concerned specifically about our population here. And I don't believe Brentwood has paramedics. I, I, I was hoping to have a discussion with the chief today, but apparently he got pulled away. So I'll, I'll further that discussion privately and find out what their capabilities are, or invite him to a subsequent meeting to join us. We don't, in the nursing home, do we have anybody that is qualified as a paramedic? And is it even remotely appropriate to have somebody on staff as, in, at that level? I mean, who do we call if we need a paramedic right now?
So that's actually one of the questions that I wanted to follow up on, because I'm uncertain, there's different kind of levels. Some nursing homes have contracts with a vendor, like an AMR, that they call first for non-emergency before going to utilize kind of the emergent route through the town resources. I'm uncertain at this time if those contracts are in place, but I did write it down, because I want to follow up and see if we have a contract with that in place.
Those, it might have been Exeter. That may very well have been the.
Yeah.
It was.
Hampton has EMTs, but they're not close enough.
There, there are companies, you know, historically in the last center, I was, we had contracts with two different providers that they had local hubs that they're, they were our first call for non-emergent services. So it wasn't, you know, adding stress to the town and county. So without kind of knowing and looking through that, I would want to be able to answer that clearly and correctly. And if that's a possibility with this location, if there's a kind of, they tend to have a hub in a certain location where they can actually provide the service. And I'm uncertain with this location if that's an option.
And that's been tricky, I mean, I think getting these contracts has been difficult too, it's the same thing as transportation services. I mean, it's all under the same umbrella of, you know, staffing shortages and availability, and I think we've really struggled with those, a number of those, those contracts.
Yeah, if you don't mind. I, I do know that Executive Council Stevens has been working on this issue with Exeter Hospital. I think they gave a ten-day notice, but then she held them and they committed till the end of the year, which is good. But you're talking about training paramedics, I really think this is a state issue. The state really should be the one that's actually looking for grants for the money for this, because it's an issue, I think at that level, not necessarily the county, but that's my opinion.
It's almost like analogous, analogous to emergency rental assistance, right? There's, it is a state issue, but it's already also a county issue. And so if there are resources at our disposal at a county level that we can address county-specific issues and, you know, I think there's, it's certainly worth exploring and trying to address, because the, talk about, you know, it's like, and be great if the state takes it on, but I, I think historically what we see is the downshifting of cost and responsibility from the state to the county and thereafter, so I think we should be, I mean, I appreciate that this is on the agenda, that we're taking it on and that we at least get some work on exploratory options at this point of what resources might be available to help address some of these imminent concerns.
Superintendent Henry, do you have any thoughts on this topic? Because you have a different population that might need these services, how do, how would we handle it now? Or how would we handle it after December twentieth, when ALS has ceased to exist in Exeter?
So we're, my medical department is currently is talking to the fire chiefs and, and try to obtain who has paramedics to begin with in our catchment. I know some are part-time, some are full-time, and seeing if we can't start the dialogue with the fire chiefs and have them come, come here and do a tour, it's what we did in the past with some EMTs and towns and those kinds of things, have them come here and do a tour so they felt comfortable inside the jail. So right now, we're starting that dialogue and finding out what our resources are and who we want to call. Not opposed for us even going into an MOU saying, you know, if they're willing, saying we call you first if somebody has that bandwidth. But that's what we're starting with right now to see what's out there.
I mean, we have resources from a, from a law enforcement side of, of regionalized task force and, you know, response teams there for emergency situations. Is there, you know, maybe there's some opportunity in, through Superintendent Henry's point about having some sort of consortium or resource force, if you will, of, you know, of paramedics, something we could explore, like a, you know, analog, analogous to the, the sort of task force or response teams that we see in law enforcement.
I, I, I agree, and I think this is an issue where all hands on deck. Let's put our thinking caps on and figure out what is a good idea and whatever resources that you have that you can reach out to and get some ideas and thoughts on fixing this problem, especially for our population, that's, that is our immediate concern. And then, of course, the entire county has this issue that we're being made aware of. But I'm, I'm really concerned for the nursing home and the jail, that, that's like my highest, should be our highest prior.
Can I make a, can I make a suggestion? I would suggest, well, I'll start with the Brentwood Fire Chief, I'd have him maybe come in and, and talk to the board, what's up, what's going on? But maybe we have Playroom over to Hilton, is send a letter to all of our towns that are in Rockingham County, see if the fire chiefs would come to a meeting. And so have this discussion globally, because it's for all of our residents in Rockingham County, to see what resources they have and, and their thoughts, because again, we're all spitballing here, but they're the ones that have their, the, the, you know, pulse on what exactly what's going on, just a suggestion.
I think it's a great idea, thanks.
All right, yeah, we'll look into that, I know that the chiefs did meet once last week, you know, when they knew they had ten days' notice. And I did invite the Brentwood Fire Chief today, but he's gotten taken away from, with some other duties, I feel.
Let's, I think that's a great idea, I mean, that we could be present for, and we could send a letter out to them and see, like, try to hold the meeting to some outreach. We can reach out, and particularly in our, I mean, I think each of our, each individual commissioner can reach out to your, within your district, to the various chiefs, pretty easy to do, to just, you know, may, pick up the phone and call in addition to the letter saying, hey.
See what they have to say.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so we'll continue this discussion later, I think that we know, understand the problem. And we'll continue to think about how we're going to address that. All right, next, our discussion is our county travel and training policy as it relates to elected officials. I can start this off as well.
Yeah, either one, I'm happy to.
It's come to my attention that we as elected officials are not employees of the county. At the surface, I figured it was, I got a paycheck, so I feel like an employee. But it, that's not the full case, because our salaries, our benefits are dictated and controlled by the delegations. And we are not under the dictates of the employee manual or any of the employee policies. Although most of us probably comply with most of those, those things, because I don't think there are any elected officials that are looking to specifically not comply with things, but we don't have, elected officials don't have regular hours, we don't get all the benefits of the, as, as the employees do, it, it's different benefits. So I, I, I guess my, just to start the conversation with, that's what I've kind of concluded, that we're, we are in a different category, elected officials are in a different category than employees.
Sure. Just, but with respect to the travel, this is with respect to filling out the traveling training policy, travel out-of-state training and travel policy request forms. And I think with respect to the policy, I think it's valuable to get the history of where it came from. And that generated because unfortunately, we all watched what happened in Stratford County with the sheriff there. And the abuse of travel and training resources, and then it coming, you know, the commissioners learning about this after the fact, right? And as commissioners, even though we are responsible for the, the spending of money within the county, right? We are responsible for the budget, we have to oversee spending, and one of those things are spending for travel and training. I, and in that, in the case of Stratford, you know, it would have been way better for the commissioners to know, learn about these misappropriations or the spending on these travel, these travel trips, had they, you know, been known on, been aware of it on the front end, rather than looking like they're left holding the bag on the back end. We have also not been immune from some of these issues within our own county, where, and this was specific to commissioners and long predated this board, but that a commissioner used the credit card to add a training or travel and purchased dinner for six or seven people, a very expensive steak dinners and drinks and things like that. And that's why, as commissioners, we feel, even though, you know, we're elected, we fill out the travel and training forms and we just would be.
Welcome, come in, fine, we'll address you in a few minutes. Great, thank you.
That with the respect to, and I'll make it brief, with respect to like going to the Association of Counties Conference, we fill that out for ourselves, right? So this is not from a, the, the impetus for implementing this is to make sure as our duty to oversee spending that we're paying attention to this level of budget. And that includes, because our, we are responsible for spending of not just department heads and directors, but also the elected officials that are leading departments. So I, my position is that everyone should fill it out. I don't think we've ever said no to a travel and training request, I don't, it's not a, it doesn't come as a, me, we don't use it as a means of, of denying people opportunity. It's more for oversight and awareness. And I think because, especially given what we've just seen playing out in Stratford County, that this is applicable to elected officials, given our role in overseeing money and that we should require this across the board.
Commissioner Cherichello?
Yep, thank you. So yes, we're elected officials, but I'd have you think about what you get at the end of the year for tax purposes. Do you get a W-2 or do you get a ten ninety-nine? You get a W-2, which means you're an employee. If you are elected, true, but you're an employee. So I don't have a problem with the policy, I, I, I agree with Commissioner Coyle, that the commissioners are really to set the policy here. That's not to interfere with the elected officials' day-to-day business per se, but we're responsible for the money, we're responsible for the policy, so I sort of agree on that. And I'm leaning towards the fact that, along with Commissioner Coyle, I don't think we've ever done I'd anybody since I've been here four years. If it's in the budget, we've, we've used that many times, we've said, hey, it's in the budget, it's fine. So I don't really have a problem with that. You know, could it be used against people in the future? I, I don't, I, I mean, I suppose it could, but I'm going to lean towards the fact that that really falls under our purview as commissioners. And again, you are an employee, so am I, I get a W-2, which spells it out, you're an employee according to the IRS. So that's, that's all I've been saying.
So according to the IRS, I agree, we are probably employees, because we get W-2 forms, but we're a different category of employee than the rest of the employees, all the elected officials are in a different category. So let's just paint a scenario. Let's say a, an elected official sends in a request and this board or a future board says, no way, you're not going, you're not spending two thousand dollars, you can only spend a thousand dollars, or whatever other restrictions some, the board of commissioners says, and we say, denied. And decide that, no, it's an inappropriate amount to spend. I don't believe that it's within our jurisdiction to deny an appropriate amount to spend, so long as it's within the budget of that person's, you know, department. Now, when the warrant comes in for us to pay the warrant, we do have approval over to whether to pay the, the warrant or not. And if there were items on that warrant like alcohol, which we very specifically have laws against the county buying alcohol, we might deny on that. We may also deny on some other. Um we may also deny on some other factors and I'm. I kind of question, I've never looked into, how come the commissioners in Stratford County weren't watching. Where these expenses and what they related to, maybe they didn't get receipts.
So a couple of things, we do have the capacity to um freeze a budget, right? Where they're charged with the money and if essentially the travel and training policy request is like a preemptive approval of the warrant. I I would think everybody would want to do it, because it's like. You don't want that situation to come where you put, you know, we deny a warrant and the money's been expended. This is like. Uh and how. Yeah, it's a preemptive uh and approval. And so how powerful is it if uh. You know, elective official says, I put in for this, you approved it, and then. If they, there was ever an effort to deny the warrant thereafter. It would be like you couldn't do it. So it's like, it's an insurance plan at at one level. It's a, it's preapproval essentially to make sure that there's like the checks and balances and make sure everyone is on the same page. And um you know, I think, again, it all, this is intricately tied to. Approval of expenses and warrants, particularly as you were describing. And so. I feel comfortable.
Okay, so I I'd like a few other people to weigh in on and on this, and since um. The uh HR police is here. I'd like to invite Allison to comment on how she views this uh circumstance.
I try to not to, I I try to want to stay out of this in some regard, because there are like, it's elected officials and then I'm employee based. Um so I feel like, you know, um you are bound by some federal policies, whether they're, you know, sexual harassment. Retaliation, some of those things, it doesn't matter, you're you're here and if something happens and there's an allegation, you're part of it. Um so those things follow, but as far as expenses, I I do know that everybody does a very comprehensive pre-budget. That you need with Chuck on, um I know I do, when I do my budget, I have my own Excel, we we itemize everything to. To the hilt, so by the time we get to the Board of Commissioners and you're having those conversations with the budget. I know I had questions on my conference, I was able to go down and say, these were the things, here are the people, here's what I think the associated costs are with that. So um I think we have fantastic elected officials here all around that have been with us for many years. Um. I I think we have that we went back to the to the policy. To up the the amount of the cost of the food and such. Uh we had a very clear situation that Commissioner Coyle um outlined a few years back with an elected official that um.
Commissioner.
Commissioner, which was. Very uncomfortable, but it came home uh to everybody. About how we're using and what what we do with our money here. I I know it resonated with a lot of us here. So I I think it's um. I I I feel like it's the commissioners that have to make those decisions and I I follow suit on what they think.
Chuck, from a financial perspective, do you see a difference here?
I do see that elected officials, to a degree, fall under different category. Yes, W two makes it seem like, you know, you're. An employee, but elected officials don't necessarily have to follow things in the personal policies, procedures, manual, like. All, you know, non-elected individuals do. Um so my opinion would be that obviously. Um not obviously, but my own two cents then would be if it was the wish of the board to. Explicitly modify the policy to include employees and elected officials. Maybe that's the way to to change it, if that's the will of the board. I do see that there's a difference between employees and elected officials. And just to support Allison's point, yes, um some of us even in the MUNIS online budget module. Will itemize actually within our um like conference line. The individual trainings. I know that, yes, I have a sheet too that I. Put down every single training, who's. Uh you know, intended to attend the training and how much it is. Um and also including support possible last conference.
And I I do think all of the um division directors and elected officials. Um come to the board with our budgets. With the knowledge that if you're not gonna approve something, then hopefully you're gonna tell us at that stage that it has to come out of the budget. You know, a person's budget. So and I've had that happen to me in my budget, where something's had to, I. Put something in, but by the time it it had to, just because of impact. So I I think in reality, I think some of us walk away if our conferences are approved. You know, at that level, that you've kind of given us the okay that we could, you know, thinking after the budget's approved, we can go forward with those. The essence of those conferences. So to have it come before the board on that form, just so there's something in the finance end of things for reconciliation. Because they do do audits, um pretty significant audits of some of those lines um for purposes. That it wouldn't be a bad thing, because you've already seen the approval and it's just a sec, it's just the paper trail of everything.
Yeah, my, the accounts payable individual in my office reviews all the warrants and I review all the warrants. She puts together and enters herself.
And maybe.
You know, as well.
Maybe the remedy is like, it doesn't have to be specifically, I mean, I agree, I have that same idea as you suggested. Chuck, which is just to add. Employees and elected officials, I mean, but I, it's not really so much as like the approval as it is notice. Right? So what what is our objectively, what is our objective here? It's to be put on notice of what expenses are likely to be incurred. And that if we have to take it up preemptively, we can, as opposed to. You know, having to, you can't unring the bell after the expenses have been incurred. So maybe there's just a. We could put something together which is more designed for elected officials as a notice. Notice of intended travel and training, you know, something to that extent, so that at the front end, we're aware of what's being incurred. And we don't, again, like, we're not like. At the, you know, after it's incurred, being like, wait, what?
So. The question of denial of. Uh and I I mean, I question now whether I should have been denied. Twenty dollars I went over on a conference, because, you know, it was within our budget. You know, I had, there was one day that my inadvertently that my meals were, I must have been hungry that day. I went over by a few dollars. And um I I mean, that that's nitpicking, but I think that anything that we. Want to. Qualify for the elected officials, I think that needs to be. Done by the delegation or agreed by the delegation or. You know, elected policies, because I don't think that um we have the, I don't think the three of us have the authority to to say. What um the sheriff, the county attorney and registered deeds are allowed and not allowed to do.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we absolutely.
Delegation's job, I apologize, the delegation's job is to to tell us how much money we can spend. The commissioners actually spend the money, they create the policy. I wouldn't want it to loom the commissioner's responsibility. That's what it seems like we're trying to do here. Um and yes, I I agree with you and I had mentioned that earlier, you know. Could there be a bad egg somewhere down the line where the commissioner's gonna be vindictive politically and say, no, I won't let you go?
Well, that would be my concern.
You know, we have great department heads here, most of the time the budgets are approved. Everyone is, does a great job staying in the budget. Um but I just don't want it to loom the commissioner's responsibility. I mean, if you think about it, there's only thirty of us in the whole state. We have an awesome responsibility. I I don't want to give that up. Uh so.
That's what is, that's our role. I mean, I think you defined it perfectly, actually, like our job, we do have oversight. Over spending of those, just because they're elected to that position, absolutely. Firing and all the other obligations and spending, it doesn't say elected. Anything over ten, the statute doesn't say anything, any spending over ten thousand dollars by a department with an elected official. Goes right to the delegation, no, those are all within our, the role of commissioner.
Yeah, I agree. And uh, no, that's okay. And um sort of kind of related to on the town side, we have a town clerk. The alderman or the selectman or um whatever the legislative body is there, they set the salary. Technically, you could set the salary for a town clerk at zero, you could do that, that's an empowerment for town council. So I think that's similar. Would they ever do that? I've never seen that. I don't think that that people would be that reckless. Um I I think that we're all adults here and we, you know, but but I I. I still feel that, yes, the department has run their, they can run their jobs as elected officials. But. Components inside of those departments are really our responsibility. We we hold the first strings, we're the ones who who need to answer the bill.
Okay, so I think this is a good, healthy discussion. I don't think that we have any particular motions. That we're gonna make. I I, is there anybody else that wants to talk on this, speak on this topic? Kathy? Kathy Stacy, register deeds.
Yeah, I just appreciate the discussion, because I'm the one who asked the question about it, because I've never seen this form before. I sent you all the email on September fifth. Questioning what was this form, who's responsible to pick it up, you know, to fill it out, you know, because I've never, I've been here a little while. Um so this was all new to me, because I hadn't done it before. So, you know, as you know, I mean, I'm I'm pretty much a um. You know, I follow the rules, but this is something that to me was. Absolutely out of left field for me, um because as I said, I've never and I've been here a while. Um so I was, you know, obviously questioning and I'm I'm glad you finally took it up, so that, you know, if I have to fill out a form, I'm gonna fill out a form. But again, um I absolutely disagree with you, Brian, that you think that I'm an employee, because I'm not. I'm not a county employee, by any stretch of the imagination. And neither is the sheriff and neither is Pat Conway. Uh and neither are you, and neither are you. Um yeah, we are elected officials and everything that we get is set by the delegation. You know it, I know it. We're not on a pace get, we don't get any of the other benefits that employees get, we get no longevity. We we get no stipends every time you guys are giving out stipends. Those are employee benefits, we're not employees. But if you guys, if you guys want this form filled out, that I have no issue with that. Money's in my budget, I'm gonna fill it out and I'm gonna send it in.
I I very really disagree with you, Kathy, but in this case, I do, I do think that we do get the W two. And we're employees, we are considered employees. Um otherwise, we'd be giving out ten ninety nines and where. Uh you know, uh that that's the only two options you have, you're either ten ninety nine or W two, W two is employee, but. Anyway, I can appreciate different um viewpoints, uh and I get it. Uh but I still think that the the commissioners really should set that, set that policy. It's really their responsibility and if we didn't do it in the past, I I can't speak for the past.
Uh I mean, again, this was just to be backup, this was I. We implemented this after seeing what went down in Stratford, and it's like, whoa. We need to have a little tighter reins on the, like, not tighter reins per se, but be more aware. And it was like, it mostly comes from a a place of wanting to make sure that, you know. Our person, that we are, have a sense of where the spending is happening and so that we can be accountable to the delegation when we. Her, how we spent the money. So um it's not to micromanage anybody. Because I think what's clear, and Kathy, you're like at the head of the class of this, of being tight within, you know, you. Run a super tight budget and really like your budget's always very tight. Um you come in cleanly always, um it's impressive. And you know what, I would say that to. It's, you know, it's not an easy job budgeting for these, and I I am. Constantly impressed with how careful all the department heads are with their budget, how mindful they are. That we're using taxpayer di- dollars and the efforts people go to um to put together a thoughtful. Uh a budget each year. It it makes our job as commissioners so easy. Um when we and why we have so few changes with budget, because everybody does such an outstanding job. That said, you know, at the end of the day, you know, screw up is on us. And so it's just a matter of making sure. We can account for it and we can be, and I can say, stand up and say, listen, this is what, you know, this is what was done, this was why it was done, this is why it approved. We thought it was reasonable for A, B, and C reasons, and that's kind of, and so I don't really care if it, if if. The elected officials would rather have, I mean, I'm open, if they're like, hey, can we just do a notice, like, here's what it is, like, here's how we're gonna. It's not so consequential. I think though, it's like a distinction without a difference in terms of filling out the form. And so if everybody's comfortable with it, my my, I would kindly request, because we have the form, use the form. It's consistent. Like we don't not approve it, you know, we recognize that all the good things that we was doing.
Uh I just have one more point if I if I could.
Joe.
I I just want to take that example of a a past commissioner using. The card for something that went above and beyond what it should have, right? And and we use the example of, uh you know, commissioner denying, but let's just play this devil's advocate for a second. Let's just say we have an elected official. Who says, wow, I don't have to follow policy and I'm gonna overspend, sort of like with the with the sheriff in Stratford County did. So do, and and the public complains, do they complain directly to the to the elected official? No, they're gonna come to us, the commissioners, because we hold the purse string. They're not gonna go, uh and if you have a rogue. Uh elected official who says, I'm not gonna follow that rule, I'm just gonna spend whatever I want to spend, you got a problem. So I think, I think staying consistent is probably the key. I don't, I don't think um, I don't think it's a big deal um. Have having that and everyone kind of, everyone, including commissioners.
Can I, can I just comment? I mean, I I I appreciate what you're saying, Commissioner, but here's the reality. You get a finance department that pretty much checks and makes sure you're not overspending your budget line. So I mean, for anybody to go rogue, I mean, I don't see that in Rockingham County. I mean, I don't know what happened in Stratford, I mean, talk about a cluster. You know, but this is the perfect reason why I don't have a county credit card and I don't want one. I don't want one. Because of what happened with years ago, you know, a few years ago, because that never should have happened, never should have happened.
And I don't mean to be argumentative, Kathy, um like I said, I really disagree with you. But in the case, and this is not a huge neglect thing, uh in the case of Commissioner Goddard going to Washington and overspending that budget line. Uh and and the finance department found it, right? And they said to Commissioner uh Goddard, you need to pay this, and he did. But what if I have a rogue elected official who says, sorry, I already spent the money, I'm not paying it back? Then what? I, you're not, you're on you.
How can they spend it? How can they spend it? They don't, they don't have access to the bankbook.
Also reimbursement, right?
The reimbursement. So I mean, we're getting off subject, I think.
Like, again, can we just, just to redirect, which is. There's no, no concern about faith and confidence in the department heads, directors, elected officials. Uh quite the contrary, I, like I said, everybody does an amazing job, but the bat, the the form just. All it does is give like data to the commissioners and it streamlines it and makes it easy. So. Um you know. If you, if the the kind request is to fill it out, if we want to get into, we need to modify a policy, we can, I just feel like. The effort again, like I said, is just for, you know, transparency and uh just for us, for our own accountability. Not your, as much as your accountability, as our accountability, so.
Okay, so can we conclude this discussion for a moment?
Came in, we want to take it for his time.
Right, right, we're, we're good with this discussion. Okay, so we're gonna back up. To the impact of Exeter Hospital discontinuing the ALS paramedic service. We have uh. Fire Chief Joseph Byrd joining us uh to discuss. Well, specifically, I I'm 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 requesting a little discussion and clarification on how. Uh this circumstances is affecting. The county population at the nursing home and at the jail.
Chief Byrd. At the moment, good morning, everybody. At the moment, uh. Is supposed to be status quo. They are still gonna continue the service. The service will be around through December twentieth. Is what we've been told, they were forced to. Adhere to a contract and somebody pulled out of a dusty drawer and said, you have to give us ninety days. The way everybody else was informed when that all went down was not the way to do. You have to give us ninety days. The way everybody else was informed when that all went down was not the way to do things, but. We'll leave it the way it landed. I know there have been a couple of paramedics that have left. I have not been in touch with the rest of the group as to how many are staying. So I do not know exactly how it's gonna function after Friday or after tomorrow afternoon. But I do know that they are mandated by the Attorney General's Office to continue the service.
So do you have paramedics in Brentwood?
I've got five on my roster, but that doesn't mean they're around. The way the system works pretty much. Is, it's pretty good during the day. These guys do a lot of legwork at night for us. It's a service that it started something like thirty years ago. That nobody really even took a thought of, but it has created the paramedic program in the area. And made it go on because a lot of the union departments went, if we're gonna do this, then it's gonna happen this way. It's expanded out to help everybody else to do that. But like I said, I got five on my roster. But I may not have one on during the day, so I rely on that service just as much as everybody else. Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, and sorry, chief, we had a little bit of an early discussion, so. When I wear my other hat, I'm also a town councilman, just to let you know. So. What I'm being told by my fire service, uh, in, in the fourth largest community in the state is that a lot of these firefighters, in the past. They used to cross train as paramedics because they'd actually get more money, right? They're, they're, they're ENT paramedic.
Right.
But I'm being told that a lot of these younger kids that are getting into fire service aren't necessarily getting more interested in. The paramedic side of things.
It's becoming. We, as small departments, you're in a different situation in Derry. You can probably do that. There's a, there's a version of that going on down in Plasbough right now. He's got literally an engine company and he's got a paramedic program. Because he has the town big enough to be able to do that. He set up the original deal with the, um. With the engine and pushed that because they had a private ambulance service running in town. He has extended, since expanded out that he's got his own ambulance and a paramedic program.
Was that Trident?
Uh, the one before that.
Private ambulance? Okay. And those, and those private industries are getting out, basically.
Right. Well, there again, it's, they'll, they'll tell you and I'll tell you the same thing. Money's not in emergency transport.
Yeah.
It's in, it's in the shuttle services. So they charge. What they think they should and then bill on top of that, and that's how they try to make it survive. Uh, like I said. They've done that in Plasbough. Uh, we're getting a group together. I'd like to include that chief and another chief that's in the area that's been through this. Down in Mass. And, but we're looking at, at least a year away before you even get that program started. So come December, it becomes a question of how things continue. I've got a paramedic on today. I may not have a paramedic on tomorrow.
Right.
Eppen's got a paramedic on usually during the week, but that, that's not necessarily the way it carries. What these guys done is filled that hole. If you get back to back calls going on and you need a paramedic in Stratum. You need a paramedic in, in Deerfield, because they literally run all the way to Deerfield. They'll try to split. They do run two to a truck at a time, but they answer the initial call. If they can split, they'll take the truck and continue to the next call. They're filling a void where the rest of the paramedics are.
Sounds like you have like a mutual aid.
It's, yeah, it was something that, yeah, it was set up that way originally.
Yeah.
And like I said, because it's a private service, they decided that it wasn't profitable to them and they yanked the rock.
And one more quick question on it. I, I don't know this for a fact. They're saying that it's not profitable. They're trying to run a business. I get that. Is that because of the Medicaid and Medicare?
That's part of it. That's part of it. Then they, they could have done some things that I don't wanna tell stories out of school. They could have done some things to restructure things, had they sat down and talked to us. Not to mean that they're gonna get every town on board.
Right.
Uh, you know, the smaller towns are strapped for funds to begin with. And they run smaller departments and it would be one of those things, okay, Brentwood uses it a hundred times a year and. You know, Deerfield uses us twenty-five. So how do you justify the cost of product? That was something that we've never sat down. It is the typical merger. We come in, we're gonna clean house. We'll set it up the way we wanna set it up. And we'll go back. They, we're not the only thing that got whacked unfortunately, but that was the bigger thing that, that disappeared.
Is there anything that we can do to help you at this point? And maybe that question needs to be answered in a month after you've had a little bit more.
Yeah, I would like to sit on that and see if, if there's anything comes out of this meeting. I know, um, Seacoast Chiefs is, which is the area group. There's a lot of us along to down this way, um, is trying to put a committee together now to. To study it. They've asked me to actually sit on it too, and we'll see where we go from there. Um, yeah, we're gonna take at least a month before we have, really have something going. Like I said, I'd like to see us use something similar to his model, but it would be, whether it's run by Seacoast Chiefs or it becomes a private. Entity, we gotta sit down and figure out how to do that.
Can we, um, you know, I guess whether it's bringing all the, uh, chiefs together with a meeting with the, um. County or maybe we can, I'd be happy to like make, invite myself to your meeting. So that, uh, that, I mean, with the idea that, you know, we're, to the extent that we can be a part of the solution or.
I, I appreciate the offer, the offer. Let us try to get our feet wet and figure out directions that we'd like to go in at the moment. Like I said, it hit us. They were notified Monday. We were notified by Facebook Tuesday, or actually Monday night. And the official word went out Tuesday morning as a phone call. And they got an airphone when that happened. I feel bad for the people who were on the receiving end because they're not the problem. And then the AG, thank you to, uh, Executive Counselor Stevens. Got involved in it, got the AG's office involved in it, and that's what they've come up with so far. As far as I know, the AG is still involved in it. Supposedly the hospital's willing to sit down and talk to us. Not holding my breath, but, um, that's the word that's, that's floating at the moment. Anything we can do to help, yeah, okay. If you really thought that way, you wouldn't have done what you did to start with, in my opinion. So.
Okay, anything more? Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you. Appreciate the invite. Now keep the guys posted. Have a good day.
You too.
And I'd like to have a one-minute recess, please. Uh, good morning. We're back from our recess and we're gonna continue on our, uh, agenda. The next, um, the next issue to discuss, uh, is our urban county status. Uh, entitlement to CDVG funding.
I move to decline the urban county status under the Community Development Block Grant Program for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. And authorize the acting chair to sign the response letter addressed to the Department of, of Housing and Urban Development.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Yeah, this would just be giving up our right to do individual CBDG, um, in a different manner. We, we, we don't wanna give like that up.
Yeah, it would put a limited money on the cap and also we'd have to run all of the county program. We have none of the emphasis.
Right, it costs us a lot of extra money then.
Yes.
On the advice of our finance director, he's explained in detail why we do not want to, uh, accept this at the moment.
Costs more money, lose less access to resources.
So, just not advantageous to us right now. Okay, so with that, any further discussion? Uh, Commissioner Chiricello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Can I vote yes?
Thank you.
County Attorney's Office.
I move to approve the hiring of an assistant county attorney pursuant to Hampshire R S A seven, form thirty-three dot up, as recommended by the county attorney. With approval from the Attorney General pending.
Second.
Uh, discussion on that. Pat, do you wanna, uh, say anything about this employee or?
No, it's, uh, we're excited about hiring him. He's got a, a good background. He's fairly new, but, um. He's got some good background. He was a, a teaching assistant for a legal writing class in law school, so that's always a plus to have a strong writer. Um, so we're looking forward to that.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Chiricello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, change order requests for facilities.
I move to approve a change order request for Toshiba for an amount not to exceed ten thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars, as recommended by the senior director. For certainly planning and IT and the IT manager.
Second.
Uh, discussion.
Three more copiers.
Do we have?
That contract that started in twenty-one and now we're just, um, that was originally awarded. And this is just for additional, one additional.
Uh, are we within budget on that?
Yes, what will happen is it'll transition from being an IT expense to being the other department's expense over the last. It's like seventeen, well, sixteen months of the twenty-month period, once it gets going.
Okay, uh, seeing no further discussion, Commissioner Chiricello?
I'm a yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Um, yes.
Thank you.
Next, Human Resources Wellness Event.
I move to approve a breast cancer awareness activity and Raffle Prize. In, uh, drawing utilizing signal wellness dollars and amount not to exceed six hundred dollars, as recommended by the senior director of Human Resources.
Sorry.
Any discussion on this?
Just that Allison, I've said this before, your team does such a great job with the creativity of using, uh, wellness dollars and, um, programs and so things.
Uh, Commissioner Chiricello?
I'm a yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Uh, new hire bonus criteria amendment for corrections officers.
I move to approve an amendment to the new hire bonus criteria for correctional officers effective September twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. As recommended by the senior director of Human Resources.
Second.
Um, discussion on this.
Discussion, um, just trying to figure, so is this, this is a new bonus program?
No, it is a current bonus program we have in place.
Okay.
For sign-on. What we wanna do is just treat the language a little bit to have an exception for the disciplinary rule. Uh, and that is if they're assigned mandatory overtime, you wanna, even though we're. The department is identifying that personnel file, so that if it becomes systemic long-term. They have something they can discuss with it, but mostly, um, Jason and I had a long conversation about it. Most of the folks, uh, other places throughout the communities, um, don't do discipline for mandatory overtime perspective. And Jason can talk to that.
Sure, um, a lot of facilities are so short, um, some are documenting it, some are not, um. But not like state prison, not wholly against them for discipline purposes unless it comes a pattern. So even for here, when we were really, really short. You know, we have to make that decision of what do we wanna look at best for employees and stuff. We document, um. You know, it could be counseling and those kinds of things, but we're not wholly against them for promotions or pay or anything else. Uh, especially when we're so short. With that, we, being said, we've closely tracked if it becomes a pattern or becomes an issue. Um, what happened, we found out was here, because the way that things are written, we have, and this is, the, what the bonus is only for the new employees. Is we had, some people had to refuse overtime. One had to go take care, but had a medical scheduled appointment already, a legitimate excuse, but. We still document it, even though we're not holding it against them. Uh, if that makes any sense to you, because we wanna make sure it's not a pattern down the road. We do that for everybody that's here. And we find out what their reason is, even though it might be legitimate, we still document it, but not holding it, uh, uh, against them until we find out we need to.
All right. I, I think this is about, uh, being able to give the sign-on bonus to a corrections officer that. Has a, a single, uh, incident, technically, the way it was written, they were not supposed to allow the sign-on bonus. Uh, but we wanna avoid that restriction because we need the officers and it's. Uh, probably inappropriate disciplinary to cut the pay that we agreed to give them. We don't wanna lose employees over that.
Thank you.
Okay, so on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Chiricello?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, uh, department head updates, and Allison, you're in my favorite seat, so you get to start us off.
Um, so, um, all is well in HR, our, um. The building is, um, getting cleaned up and things put in order. I think we'll be moving over there next week just to allow for some time. To get everything situated on the building. Um, we've just been super busy just following up on a number of things. I do wanna converse with you about the COEH contract. Um, we do, I did have a meeting on Mondays. Um, in that meeting, I met with, um, Kathleen, um, Lawrence, who is the COEH director over there. And I met with.
What is COEH for me, please?
H is the, um, it is the Exeter Hospital Center for Occupational and Employee Health.
Oh, okay, all right.
So they, I got my certified letter, um, and their services are actually, will be effective twelve-nine. Um, that they will no longer be providing services. This is a component of them where they have, uh, people within other, uh, that contract. Uh, companies contracted to have services on site. They have a number of, uh, contracts throughout, uh, this greater area. Me being one of them. Um, we've had occupational health services in our building for well over twenty-five years. Um, we've had a contract through, um, Concentra back in the day with, like, these Tom Clayton for twenty-four plus years with him. Uh, then we moved over to, um, COEH under them. Uh, we, the couple of opportunities that we're talking through right now, um, would be to allow for, um. The opportunities we have is if Martha were to, uh, be a private contractor, because she's a nurse practitioner. So she can provide, uh, services on her own. Um, she doesn't need a medical director or seeing her because of her practice. Uh, and license to outsource, uh, to another company, which would be, um, potentially. Cause Concentra or, um, another organization, um, that she talked to me about, which would be, um. Occupational Health Connections. I did do an outreach to Occupational Health Connections and I had a very thorough conversation with, um. The owner of them, uh, they, uh, know, um. Kathleen Lawrence for many years. They go back twenty, twenty-five years because they both are in that line of work. Um, so, um, she had, uh, had a discussion, so we could go with an independent contractor. And, um, potential employee, if we were to hire somebody into that position. Or contract with another provider, um, to seek the services that we want. We'd wanna match them with what we have today. Um, I did ask them if they would take on, um, if they would consider taking on, uh, I had a conversation actually with Martha Lee. Bow and to ask her what her thoughts were of it. For her to become an independent contractor, it's nothing, something she hasn't thought of. And she would need time. It would, it's an impact to her. So she would even, she'd have to get legal help on her own, determine. She'd need medical, medical malpractice, there's a whole slew of things that she would need. Also, it wouldn't provide us with coverage if she was out. Because she'd be independently on her own. So, um, I did ask her if we contracted without, with another facility. Um, would she be inclined to, um, move with that, move over with that company? Um, and then through them, she would still remain placed here. And that was one of the conversations with I have had with Occupational Health Connections. To see if they would be in agreement to kinda take her on as an employee. Um, they have invested, um. They're vested in helping out COEH because they have partnered with them before. And they also provided coverage for Tom, which was something I didn't realize. When Tom Clayton was out, they provided coverage for Tom Clayton way back in the day. So they were familiar with us in some sense. So, um, what I did was I have connected Occupational Health Connections with Martha for them to engage in a conversation. Because if Martha's not inclined to do that, I think I'm still gonna have to go out for a vendor. Um, so there's a lot of moving pieces to it. Um, it may be that we contract in for a period of time, like a year agreement, to see how things flow. Um, to give us more time to figure out if this is kinda the vendor, one of the vendors we want. I went back to see how many vendors we had when we bid this out before, and we only had two. Because a lot of them had gone out of business. They have moved their services out. So Concentra was one of them and COEH. Um, Occupational Health Connections did not bid back then, so, um, uh, Nancy has indicated that. The outcome of her discussion with, um, Martha, we will reconvene to have a more. Further discussion, uh, to see, um, what their rates would be, what the contracted services would look like. Um, if Martha's willing to kinda go over with them, um, because we also, before December ninth, no matter what, we're gonna have to change, um, some of our contracts. With, uh, Quest Labs, um, some other things, because, um, those, those services were contracted under COEH. So COEH. So COEH billed us for any lab work that had come back in, so there's some stuff that has to be done. The alternative we could have is we send people to, um, Convenient MD. They go to Convenient MD, they get their, um, check, you know, their pre-employment check, we get, um. A list of whether they are cleared or not, and then we don't have any services on site for, uh, workers' comp. We don't have any services on site for our employees who have like small medical things that they'd like to have services from. That means we can keep them in the workplace and they don't have to take a day off of work to go see a provider. Um, so, I'm kinda wanting to stay with something on site, because we have had something established here. And it has such a long history here and it has worked very well for us. Um, and they've also handled emergent situations with our employees, um, they've thought to triage stuff when there's been a critical incident. One of our employees, they've been able to deal with that onsite here in the nursing home, of course, but, um, they're also available for any other type of first services throughout the community. So that's where we stand, um, but I'm trying to get things underway before that.
Okay. Great, thank you, we'll look forward to your update, what your plans are. Yeah, that's, it's, I think it's part of the same, they he bought them and then, and according to Executive Counselor Stevens, they're gutting.
Yeah.
A lot of the, uh, areas, I guess they don't think are profitable enough, and so here's another one. Chantel.
Um, good morning, so for COVID, there is currently no active staff or resident cases on the nursing home side. They're checking, we do have one, um, staff member on the assisted living side currently. Um, at, on the nursing home side, we're currently in the middle of our annual skills fair, which is, um, a over a two week period, so that is under ready. And then on my side, I have finished all of my one-to-one meetings with all of my leadership team, I have met with some of the division, um. Directors as well, and started meeting with some of our vendors and kind of working through some of those pieces at the same time.
Feeling, feeling a little bit more comfortable.
I can find my way around a little better, so that's exciting, the one staircase I knew got closed for something this week, so I learned how to get the atrium, so definitely getting around. So yeah, definitely, it's, it's been wonderful and everyone's been so welcoming, um, including the other division directors and kind of helping me kind of even understand some of the county pieces. So.
Excellent.
Been great.
Thank you. Chuck.
Um.
Don't tell us you're busy.
Oh, come on, it's a default. So just a quick thing on workers' comp, um, so we have a separate workers' comp fund. So if there is some sort of cost increase, you have to worry about necessarily impacting the general fund budget. So there is some flexibility, because the workers' comp fund is a, uh, it's, it's an agency fund, sorry, it's a different classification than general fund. So, we do have some flexibility over there and there's healthy reserves over in that fund too, if we did happen to have some sort of. Increased costs of having to go to a different company or whatever the ending resolution is. Um, just back about the ALS discontinuance, um, I will task Molly to research and to see what grant opportunities are out there. Because while it may not be a grant that Rockview County is a recipient, she can work to be, to help our Rockview County communities. And actually be the one to do all the legwork for doing the applications, but they're, the town will still be the recipients of any sort of grant. Like she's looked out for bus trans station grants, she's looked out for bulletproof vest grants, which, um. Place a emphasis on getting funding to those smaller police departments, things like that, so she can definitely be a resource. So I'll, I'll definitely talk to her and, uh, give her that task, excellent, so. And we'll see if she comes back with, it'll be interesting to see what the Seacoast Chiefs have been back with too.
Yeah.
But this seem like right now, they're trying to do some sort of mutual aid update.
That's what we're.
At the very least.
Kind of what I was suggesting with respect to having a like response team essentially across the county, but we'll see where it goes.
It, it almost seems like somebody ought to do what Exeter was doing, but who is the question?
Right.
Um, I'll just. I'll just give an advance notice that, um. People can't really see from the road per se, but, uh, revisions, they're going kinda crazy, you know, advancement with. Having, um, it looks like from the aerial view, more than half of the solar, um, panels actually. And install. So the, that portion of the Harvey bills could be quite noticeable as far as, you know, um, a big increase, uh, there.
But, but, but in fact, later on, the numbers should get lower.
Well, we're just using.
Yeah, yeah.
They, they complete more work.
Spending money to make money.
Now, now, thing is, if, if, if we have a good winter and every source is able to do their piece. Then I don't have to wait for the tax year, because we'll be filing a, a tax return to get those credits.
So we can get up and running by the year's end.
So I could be filing basically in July or August. For tax credit, hopefully revision can come through with helping to prove out that they meet or beat the prevailing wage. You know, for each of their positions they have on the job.
Send another three mil?
Um, yeah, three million is really.
Oh, my gosh.
That's awesome.
So yeah, six percent base credit, twenty-four percent for beating prevailing wages.
That's three mil on that, but then you've got. Running, you're gonna actually save money a little bit quicker too.
Yeah, so that's a, and again, normally the county can't avail itself of, of tax credit, so this is. Part of the Inflation Reduction Act, the direct pay piece of it, so. I'm looking forward to if they can please, because it means the county, we can apply.
The better, the.
Yes, yes, so it's a difference of, you know, twelve months, if they, everything could be up and running and operational before June thirty. So I'd be looking for that.
We look at twelve month savings, which.
It just means we can, we can put in for the, um, chat for this year rather than the following.
Yeah, so, so.
But the generation part, harsh, portion of it, if you're getting that up and running earlier.
Oh, that's great too, that's great too, that's even better.
Yeah.
Every month is an advantage, right?
Right.
Yeah, just that if it's not up and running, the solar rate until July, I have to wait until the following July.
Right.
Right.
The tax for the year ending sixth thirty twenty-six.
So you're saying, they're saying January is what they're targeting.
We just mean June.
I just, this before June, if we can be up in.
We need June.
Oh, before June or June or before?
Because it's in this tax.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
So as long as it's before June thirty, then, uh, I can file for that credit on a twenty twenty, you know, fiscal year for us anyways.
That would be very important, considering that we have four human contracts coming up next year.
It would definitely help, and so whether it's that, you know, it allows for a little bit more to be budgeted for use of fund downs or what have you. Yes, it definitely can, can help. So, and obviously, the same thing goes for the EV, separate EV, um, projects as well.
Yeah.
So the complex one, the one over at the new building, which has to be separately registered, project with the, uh, IRS. And that one would be a straight out thirty percent base credit. So the, the one for solar arrays, a little different, less base amount because of how big it is, so that's why they wanted to be. Needing prevailing wages to get the other twenty-four percent to get up to a thirty percent credit, so.
That's, I mean, unbelievable.
And just back there, and that's how Merrimack County was actually saying that their net cost was up, they just gave a credit, that's how.
Because they factor that.
Yes, they, they were giving a net, they were giving a net, not a gross.
Merrimack County's not doing it, right?
Well, at the, last time I heard, they had cut it down in size.
I thought there was a connectivity issue too, on, like where the main lines are.
And part of it, and if they're expecting forty percent credit, ten percent of that credit was if you did the Buy American requirements. So if they're not able to meet that, then they can't rely on that, that ten percent credit portion.
But minus, I don't need to, it's a disadvantage, but, uh, where we actually had the correct line that ran through. And it was easy to connect to, Merrimack County didn't have that same connection. Uh, I know I'm using the wrong terminology, so they'd have to put more infrastructure into that connect. Which is, which they didn't even calculate, it was gonna be very expensive.
Well, that's why Cheshire kinda just looked at it, and I think it was somewhere around seven million of, of, you know. To actually foot not ever source, and that's why they didn't go forward. I'm not sure if Hillsborough is in the same case as well, that there's gonna be other additional costs that they would have had to, to fit the bill for. So they don't, they, they kinda entertained it, but it's gonna go through, I think, um. Usource or through.
Right, right.
HAC partner.
I think we lucked.
Or NOLA partner.
The stars align for us, I think, because.
We're fortunate, location, 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 so we're fortunate where it is. And we're, so we've had done some recent, you know, improvements along the lines, you have down North Road, so we're fortunate where we, where we are.
That's good.
So yes, everything aligned, you know, just all told. Um, let's see, I, I have started getting some inquiries from, uh, and I think Leila may have too, from some non-for-profit. It's cause Juteen's office, uh, based upon older data, March thirty-first has been telling some nonprofits to reach out to your counties. And the state, I would assume, as far as if there's any ARCA monies left to be utilized. Uh, yeah, so once guy communities had reached out and, and I did tell them that the board had, um. Had permitted that the last five hundred thousand be advocated more to the, on ID and house treatment facility being built, yeah, for community corrections. So, I did mention that there is another round of CDVG, um, application's going for, uh, January. And so if they have, and they, I guess they took over the running of Farmsteads in England, you might recall that was a difference. Um, proposed CDVG project, but it didn't score high enough, but I, I think once guy took it over. And it might be other, um, a separate entity like LLC, so if it is a separate entity, then they could theoretically apply through us for. The CBG award, I know the issue was that, that was for housing, that was only gonna be for a handful of units.
Right, right.
So not as much, I guess, paying for the buck with CFA, and that's why they scored it low. But, um, so we'll, we'll see again, you know, Molly's got many different grants that she's looking at, we're coming up on the deadline in October. Um, for that two hundred forty-three thousand dollar, um, energy efficiency committee, I conservation block grant. So we'll, we're just tightening up things on that, and that application will be truly done, uh, wait for the deadline, obviously. We also have some of the grants going on, um, I'd like Leila to know, it's not till October, but, um, the next JAG.
Oh, yeah.
Um, Justice Assistant Grant will be on the agenda too for, and it works, so Molly's been working with Sheriff's Office to try to. See where she can help them with some of the administrative processes around the grants, so. And it saves you as usual, so thank you.
Busy as usual?
Yes.
Uh, Leila.
Hi, good morning. I don't wanna harp on this subject, but annual records are due a week from tomorrow, please put them in. Um, also, the.
Do you wanna listen to the naughty list so far? I've just tried out.
No public shaming.
We have paid adjustments to the numbers, that's why I.
Get your homework in on time.
The public shaming in October.
Alright.
Also, um, NHAC, sorry, NHAC, uh, conference is, uh, well. That Board of Commissioners meeting, do they wanna make that an AP-only meeting, since we're coming back on Wednesday?
Yes, I think we could do it up at the, well, well, the question is, should we just do the. Well, if it's AP only, is it, it's a AP, not a payroll run, so, um, could we do the meeting? Should we just do the meeting on Wednesday at the, up at the Mount Washington? That would be, make the most sense.
Yeah. The drive home, when's the, when's the awards dinner?
Tuesday night.
So we, we do Wednesday morning?
Yeah.
Okay.
It, it has happened before, we've done the Wednesday meeting, or if it, if the conference was different days, Thursday morning, you know, wrapped your breakfast, I think.
Yeah.
Like it was called. Um, yeah, I'll just have, what will happen is, uh, Katie will have to do the review instead, Katie Casey. And put together the normal summary, file my trial review before it's, you know, dispersed to the, to Leila on, uh, on the Monday.
Okay, so yeah, schedule our meeting, um, for that Wednesday.
What, it's just an AP meeting? Or a regular meeting, because I, I just in full disclosure, I told Leila that I will not be going to Mount Washington. Um, so I won't be there.
Okay.
So if you need me to zoom, I mean, two, you have two, you can do it.
Well, you could just call in or zoom in, whatever, just if you wanna be, whatever. If there are any other bits, I guess as we get closer, we'll see what, if there are things that we have to take up other than the AP, at which point.
I'll have to zoom in.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Leila?
Well, that's it, thank you, thank you.
Alright, uh, Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, uh, everything is well over here, um, but we do request if, at the end of the meeting, if we can go into a non-public meeting on a personnel matter.
Yeah, I brought that up.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Uh, Jason Henry, please.
Morning, everybody, uh, currently sitting at one forty in-house, uh, we do have one staff member, uh, tested positive for COVID. Um, and we'll be keeping track of anybody that, um, that individual exposed to the inmates. Um, I would like to thank Robin, um, for help, we have, um, signed off on our Relia's Learning. Which is an online learning platform like the, uh, departments have around here, have had in the past, um, we'll be able to track everybody's. All the trainings, um, and plus it's thousands of courses in there, uh, add our own trainings and add our own policies in there and procedures. So at times, it's an update that be required to read and sign off on and tracks everything. We have lots of movements going on over here, anticipate moving to my supervisor positions around this week, and then more to follow. So I'll make, um, announcements as that comes out. Um, I had a quarterly meeting with Prime Care yesterday, and I let know that my game plan for the new facility is we would be opening our end. Until a year after everybody else, uh, so I would probably come back to the board to ask for, uh, another extension with Prime Care. Before we look to a full RFP, because we're gonna need nursing staff and that kinda stuff over there, so it'll give us time to figure out what we really need. And the last thing is, um, I sent Commissioner Coyle and to Chantel, the, um, what I typed up for RFP. Portion for the jail, cause as of this contract that we have is pretty weak, um, and. I hope, I, I think I put together a pretty good comprehensive, um, RFP, but I'll take any feedback, um, Commissioner Coyle, if you have anything or anybody else, so. And that's all I have, thank you.
It is robust, so I, I haven't, I, I need more time with it, cause I got it yesterday, but I want.
Alright, uh, Jude.
Good morning, everyone, I will, um, try to be brief, we're busy, all's well. Um, as far as the project, I thought you might be interested to know, there's about a hundred and fifty people here on a daily basis. About a hundred and twenty-five on the big building and another twenty-five to thirty out on the revision site, so. Things are really screaming right along, we're expecting them to start work on the lift stations next week. The wastewater lift stations here on North Road, as well as the, the little hut in front of the jail, some people call it. We'll be blocking off a few parking spaces, but we'll make sure that the flow is good. And, um, it's, it, it is one of those very exciting for me, infrastructure upgrades, like these two lift stations. Are really needful of upgrading and they will be in such great shape when the project is over. So we're happy to see that piece of it coming up, our wastewater chief, Mark Petten Gill, um, has met with them, we did a good walkthrough, they have a good sense of. Our limitations and our requirements, so hopefully it'll go smoothly, when we get a little bit closer, I'll make sure everybody knows about the parking spaces and whatnot. Um, the HPAC project is progressing very nicely, they will be here with the crane on Tuesday. They've disassembled the units that take care of the first and second and first and second floors, I should say, of Driscoll Building. So they'll be craning that equipment off, craning the new condensing unit on, um, they'll be getting ready to start work in Mitchell Building, probably. In a couple of weeks, they'll need to get in room by room to do VAV work, I'll coordinate that with Chuck and Chantel. Um, flooring work across the hall there, the asbestos is done, they're laying in the new flooring, it's pretty exciting. Uh, it does, yeah, it's beautiful, the contractor who was supposed to be taking down the delegation wall. Last week backed out, even though we'd been waiting several weeks for them to take care of it, but the GC found another sub, they came in yesterday and started to work on that. So that's moving right along, it's, it's a good thing, yeah, it was kinda nerve wracking, cause it was week after week, they were like, oh, we'll be there Friday, we'll be there Tuesday. And then when they finally came, they said, hmm, we're not gonna do this, so we, we have a new vendor taking care of it for us. Admin building is progressing nicely, we still have to, um, put the bathrooms back together, cause part of the work was we're changing out the toilet. And the vanities and the lighting and whatnot, so that piece of it, my guys are working on now. Um. I think that's everything, all's well, thank you.
Alright, great, thank you Jude, I think that concludes our, um. Updates except for Allison would like to add.
updates, except for Allison would like to add something.
Sorry, I, I just have two things that I forgot to add. On the flu clinic, I just wanted to let everybody know that um, all employee email went out on the flu clinic, we'll be offering that again, and I know Martha was in touch with all of the division directors or the administrative staff to set that off. And going back to the COE contract, I had a lengthy conversation with Kathleen and Martha about our drug screen and what we are screening for, particularly on Monday when we had that conversation on THC. Um, so just determining if we can get separated out drug screens for those that we feel still have to have a drug screen, and for those positions that we do not have to have a drug screen for with the THC in that. So Martha was going off to, you know, search the supplier and make sure that that's something that could happen. In the meantime, I had a conversation on Tuesday with Chantel, myself, and Autumn around new hire stuff, and she brought up the same thing. So I know between Chantel and I, we're working on the THC, THC.
Are we talking about the THC that I think is THC?
Yes.
Okay.
Am I talking about the right thing?
Like I'm from the seventies.
I am, right, thank you.
We.
So, um, so, um, so because it can be in edibles, it can be in some green juices, a small portion, you know, there's links to that.
It's all over the place.
It is, and but there's no specifications on what those quantities are in there, so if somebody were to take a green drink or something like that, they don't know that they could have THC and what that data could show up inside. So we're working our way through that, because I had made some.
Stay away from puppies.
And I know Chantel isn't too, so we should be able to have something, but I know there will still be maybe a department to that will have to still have that THC in there, just for parameters under what they're telling me, so I'm looking through those conversations now. Thank you.
Okay. So that does department head updates. We'll move on to new business, old business. Anybody have new business, old business? Okay, so I have new business that I'd like to bring up. For discussion. Uh, it's come to my attention that we are providing dispatch, fire and police dispatch services for twenty-four towns in Rockingham County, and they're not paying anything for it. Uh, we currently have fourteen dispatchers. I think we have thirteen employed right now, but we have uh, a need for a total of fourteen dispatchers, and that is a lot higher than we would need if we had uh, if we weren't servicing these twenty-four towns. Uh, as a result, we're spending significant amount of money that the towns are just, that are getting this free service from Rockingham County are not contributing to. I've investigated a couple of towns that are currently buying their services from other locations. Uh, specifically Atkinson has contracted with Plastow Dispatch, and they are paying fifty-three thousand nine hundred dollars a year for services from Plastow. Uh, New Fields is contracting with New Market, and they are paying thirty-four thousand dollars, a hundred and fourteen for dispatch services from New Market. Additionally, part of my, aside from the fact that these towns, which this should be a local responsibility, uh, have opted to take the free service, surprise, surprise. Uh, since apparently, I don't know how this came about, that we are giving away this service at no charge at all. Uh, because we charge for other things, such as prosecutions, when we used to do prosecutions, we charged the community for that. We currently charge the community for covering police shifts uh, in some of these communities that don't have uh, uh, coverage. I know the sheriff had mentioned to me that he expects a significant increase in revenue this year because of the details that he's assigning to help out some of these smaller police departments. So first, I'm concerned with the amount of money that it's costing us. The second, I'm concerned with, uh, why wouldn't a, a town uh, that is currently doing their own dispatch, why might they not just say, hey, why should we pay for this? We'll just go get it for free from the county. I don't know what criteria we've had up to this point to approve or deny. I don't know how that we could deny Atkinson or New Fields if they were to request us to offer free services, and I scratched my head why communities uh, like Hampstead and Stratum, which are an ethnic, which is significantly sized communities, are using our services for free. I understand a little bit better what some of the smaller, why some of the smaller towns have this issue. But, and I'm, I'm, I suspect it all comes down to amount of money that they want to spend, and if they can save money by shifting it over to us, uh, then some of these people have done that. Now, as a result, the towns that are providing their own services uh, for dispatch are really subsidizing uh, the towns who are not providing the service. So I'm suggesting that we ought to charge uh, the towns that are using our services some amount of money uh, to offset the additional employees that we have to employ in order to get, uh, to provide this service to all these towns. Now, I've put this worksheet together, and it is based on the amount of money Atkinson is paying Plastow. Um, and I've done this by population, and I'm sorry, the printout didn't include those numbers. I have them, and I'll share them all uh, with you, so that everyone can kind of play around with these numbers. But the, uh, it, it turns, Atkinson is paying seven dollars and thirty cents per person if you use their twenty-twenty senses. So extrapolating that throughout all of the counties and dividing fire and dispatch in half, I've come up with what we might charge if we charge that seven dollar rate, not seven dollars and thirty cents, so this would be modest. We would, uh, increase revenue for the county uh, of six hundred eighty-one thousand dollars, uh, which seems like the amount of money that it's costing us for all these extra dispatches that we otherwise wouldn't need. So I guess I'm, I'm opening this up for discussion. Uh, because I'm concerned, I think there's a disparage here that I don't think that all of the towns are being treated fairly. And it's budget season for these towns. They could easily add twenty, thirty thousand dollars to their budget right now and be able to uh, have that in the budget for next year. So to me, the time to discuss it is now, not waiting until they're halfway through their budget years, and, you know, they say it's not in my budget. So who would like to?
I'll chime in. So first off, I'm not saying it in a facetious way, but will you be going to the towns in front of the town councils, saying that if you propose this, and you're asking them to pay twenty thousand dollars out of their budget? That's number one.
I would feel comfortable doing that, if that's what you're asking.
Okay. Um, number two, kept using the word free. What you're gonna find is a lot of these small communities say that they're coming taxes paid for this. So it's not necessarily a free service. And this has been a, a, an issue that's been talked about many times since I've been with the, either the delegation, not really necessarily against the commissioner, but you're gonna find out that you're gonna get a lot of pushback, and I'll tell you why. Um, for instance, the town of, I'm just gonna use my town of Derry, we have our own dispatch, so we're not using you. And as you brought up, maybe that's not fair, right? The problem becomes is, then are you willing to say, well, there are more dairy residents utilizing the jail than, let's say, you know, you know, Wyndham or a smaller community, because now you're gonna split hairs, and you're gonna have these towns saying, well, Derry and Salem have more inmates at, at the jail, why should we be paying for that? So unless you're gonna break every service down this way, I'm just warning you, you're gonna have a lot of pushback. I understand where you're going with it, and I think that that's great, that you're looking for ways to bring in revenue. I'm just saying, you're gonna get, you're gonna get, you're gonna get major pushback.
Okay, so backing up a little bit, when, let's, in the context of the new CAT RMS system.
The?
CAT RMS, the Infrastructure for Dispatch, the CAT RMS. We had tasked, when we approved the, their contract, we had tasked the sheriff's department with doing MOUs with the communities, right? We talked about this, Jude, about liability and who's doing what, and my concern is, these MOUs have been created. I guess, Sheriff, what's the status of the MOUs?
Uh, there were no MOUs, I believe in that meeting, it referenced the county, the county wanted to look at MOUs, but our position with the MOUs for dispatching, we would, we don't mind an MOU for like the CAT RMS portion, uh, some of that CAT RMS, but we've always been hesitant about engaging in an MOU, because what they're essentially looking back for is a contract uh, regarding that, not an MOU, and if you were gonna go down the road of a contract, there would need to be some type of financial compensation to guarantee services at a certain level, but I know we, we would never advocate for trying to charge these small communities for dispatching services, because as Commissioner Churchill explained, we kind of, all the services across the county, I think, they got in the wash, but I know one of the towns had brought up meeting minutes, but it specifically states in there that the county was going to look at some type of MOU, but we weren't really interested in engaging in a, an MOU to guarantee the level of that service.
I think Maya, I mean, we can go back and look at the meeting minutes, but the idea of the sheriff's department having MOUs with the communities was to, for a liability issue in terms of dispatch, in terms of protecting the cap, the sheriff's department and, of course, the county from exposure for, I mean, and this is like going off on a sec, separate issue, which is like liability of who owns the data, data breach, um, who, what's gonna happen, like ninety-one A's, things, like all the things that are tied to the CAT RMS system. So maybe we can talk about that offline, but I thought when we were talking about the approving the contract for that CAT RMS system, there are MOUs, and I guess to your point, that's a separate and distinct issue from a contract regarding services and charging. I, with respect to the issue of charging, I mean, to echo, I, I agree with both the sheriff's department and Commissioner Chirichella. One, there's no palette for this by the departments, these are small departments. I think it is going to go open up Pandora's box to how much county attorney service do you use, because the small towns have a substantially lower number of cases of felonies being prosecuted, but, and you were talking about about the county attorney's office, you were talking about paying for prosecution services. It's important to differentiate misdemeanors and felonies, because all the felonies are prosecuted by the county attorney's office, so that is not apportioned or taxed to, you know, an additional fee for each town. So I, I think that.
But we were providing prosecution services for misdemeanors and charging the towns previously.
Correct, but that's been totally.
Right.
Yes. So for felony, the smaller towns that aren't really utilizing jail, county attorney's office, they're going to be, okay, let's go into a position of let's, um, we're gonna, we want everything apportioned, and then there's a second issue of the communities. If we implement this, the communities that have not been getting dispatched, they could come back and say, we want a rebate for all the, so I think that, I mean, and as there are these communities that are receiving dispatched services at this point, there's with this new CAT RMS system, there's cost for data migration. We've just sat here and listened to the chief talk about increased paramedic services. I, you know, I think frankly, when I think about it in total, it would be great if we had a regional dispatch system, that we, you know, the, that dispatch services were countywide. And maybe that's the point you charge, right? Um, but I don't know that we're going there. I just don't see this being I, I think that this, we've seen this movie before. It doesn't, it is, I'm not saying that there might not be a time and place for it. I, given the climate now, economic climate, I don't think the time is now for this.
I will, I will just say one thing. I do appreciate, uh, you looking for ways to bring in revenue, and I get that, like, if we were to start everything, all of us completely brand new, and everything was fee-based, it's a good plan. However, I just, I, you know, we've been giving these towns this service as part of their taxes for the longest time. I just think you're gonna, you're gonna, they're gonna come together and they're going to, that's why I facetiously said, are you gonna go to the meetings and ask for that money, because they are going to attack you.
That, that's fine. Um, so I, I'd like to make a couple of points. First of all, the services that we offer with prosecution with the county attorney for felonies, and the services that we provide for the jail are for Rockingham County, they are not for the towns. The towns don't have felony prosecution services on their own, they're not charged with taking care of felony, they're not charged with jailing, uh, uh, prisoners or detainees for long periods of time. These are county services, it's not relegated by town. The dispatch services are the responsibilities of each of these towns, and I'm concerned that more of the towns are going to depend on more of our services and just cost us more money. And, you know, the, the sheriff is sending out details to help the police uh, services and charging for it, and I, I don't see what the difference is between that and this service. Why should New Fields pay thirty-four thousand dollars to New Market? And why should Atkinson be paying, paying Plastow? What if they just decide, okay, they're gonna call up and say, uh, county, we, we don't want to spend money on our dispatch, because I'm gonna tell you something. The dispatch service costs if they put on, on your own, it costs a whole lot more than what they're paying, because there's a whole, you know,
Sheriff wants.
Uh, yeah, what I've done, there's a whole infrastructure that we're not charging for, even at, at the rates that I've kind of mapped out here. The amount of money that we are, uh, charging doesn't nearly cover the service. This is, this, it, it, it covers the extra personnel for, for the infrastructure that we've, um, put in. So to me, I think it's perfectly fair, and I'm concerned with Hampstead specifically, uh, we're not, uh, doing, uh, we're not dispatching for Hampstead Fire. Why should they why, you know, why should they maintain their fire service?
Hampstead.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we're doing just their police, but, okay, Sheriff.
Can we jump in for a minute, Commissioner?
Yeah, you're all, you're, you have the floor, Sheriff.
So there's a couple of items that obviously the offering of dispatch services predates anyone that's here on these boards, and even that still exists at the sheriff's office. And as Commissioner Churchill said, if we were starting something from scratch, this would be completely different. So one of the options that you, you don't have here also is you can't say that this is now the responsibility of these communities. There aren't even FCC licenses available if they wanted to start their own dispatch centers, and they can't just, it's not just putting up a base station in their headquarters and doing that. So there is infrastructure that's obviously, yes, it's been committed to, but these communities don't have the option of going autonomous and providing their own dispatch center. And I would even argue that, say, a, a dispatch center that already exists, say, you, say, New Market or Raymond or Dairy, Lemon Dairy, Salem, anyone closed up their dispatch center and eventually came to the county, uh, through, you know, some type of process. If they gave up that, I don't think they would ever even be able to get those FCC licenses back because of how restrictive they are on them. So for some of these communities, it's not just that, hey, you're just taking the service and you could do it yourself. It's not even an option for them anymore.
And then, are you done, Major?
Yes, I am, Commissioner.
The only thing I wanted to add is, we talk, you know, you're like, well, you know, the county attorney, the county offers felony prosecution. Well, Well, they could, it do- that doesn't have to be, right? Felony prosecution could happen by the, each community separately. That's an entirely. Precisely, yeah, but they don't. And so what happened in terms of some of the history of the dispatch is. I mean, for these small communities that can't do it, and also for, it, this is like an economies of scale issue with both Department of Corrections. With the county attorney's office and with dispatch, that we have to think of this in the context of, and I'm not suggesting, I mean. There. In some ways, yes, there, it might come to that be for lots of reasons that we need to start charging. However, where we are here now. Is. Given, and given the climate of having caught increased cost for all these other areas, data migration. Paramedic service, infrastructure update, that the economies of scale of offering dispatch is the only. Feasible way to make this happen. And, and so. We are fortunate that we can provide our communities with this service, because our, the residents of Rockham County need it. Just like the residents of Rockham County need a nursing home opportunity, just like. You know, that the economies of scale of having one county, county jail facility. Makes more sense than each community having cells in the jail, in their police departments that they hold people, so.
So every town that decides that they don't wanna do this anymore, they can just call us and we'll do it for free? Should I go to all those towns and say, hey, save some money on your budget, just have us do it?
Well, I mean, that's the.
First of all, that's, that's really not an option, because we still have to have the infrastructure to accept the community. We've had communities that wanted to explore coming to dispatch and we had to evaluate their calls for service, their current radio infrastructure. And it's not just that, hey, we're turning off the switch on ours. If they wanted, if, if it was something we could facilitate, which. As we built the new building for a forty fifty year building, we will physically have larger space. Where if the county commissioners and the sheriff's office wanted to work with these communities and engage in infrastructure. Contracts that could be multi-year steps of taking over critical infrastructure, towers, communications set, arrays and all that other stuff. That could be multi-year stuff, but I know a community, like, yes, just like the county attorneys, there's no statutory mandate that we have to provide dispatching services. But it's something that we've committed to, to these communities for decades, but yes. Salem could not say, hey, we're pulling the plug on dispatch next week and jumping on your channel, because. We don't have the air traffic for it, we don't have the, the staffing for it, we don't have the consoles yet. But these are things the county could look at as a whole moving forward if they wanted to work towards these things. And. Yeah, it could be thirty years from now, it could be the cost benefit of, of all the requirements that the FCC and the feds put on these local dispatch centers. They may say, you know what, it's problematic and it's not conducive, but we need a full regional dispatch center that services. All thirty seven communities in the county, so that may be where it goes.
And there's a, there's a, can I just make a note, there's a lot of police departments that wanna keep their dispatch services. That do not wanna jump onto Rockham County. And Rockham, the sheriff's office shouldn't be forcing other departments to jump on.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was sort of, uh, thank you, I was sort of gonna echo that same sentiment, so like the town of Derry. What, what I found out is a lot of the big communities wanna control their own stuff, because they, let, let's face facts, the town of Derry. Enforcement, you know, they need twenty four seven, uh, and they wanna be able to control all that stuff, whereas. The communities that are using um sheriff's department now for dispatch typically, you know, are, are very limited. Um, so I, I, I don't think you, I mean, I, I don't fully foresee you going into Salem saying, hey, save money. Go to the county, they're gonna say, no, we'd rather control our own, but that, that's my opinion.
We work, we work very well with our law enforcement partners when it comes to dispatch. Dispatch has been something that's been going on for decades. To come in and tell these police chiefs that we're gonna start charging them a fee, you open up a, open up a huge box. And it's something that I'm gonna oppose to.
Charging anybody.
But could, could, could Captain just say, go ahead, Captain?
Yeah, so there's.
Hold on.
There is a little bit of uh history where this has been proposed before, uh, under the Downing administration, I think it was maybe twenty thirteen or fourteen. We had to do a significant infrastructure project here, looking for costs, you know, finding ways to fund that. It was proposed out to the chiefs uh to do exactly what you're talking about, about charging for dispatch services. Uh, and it got pretty ugly, you probably find some news articles on that. Uh, I may even have a couple here in the office to reference. Uh, but it did not go well. It was not well received, there was a lot of pushback and uh caused a lot of uh heartburn.
Of course, they're getting something for free and now we wanna charge.
Well, but also I think it's important to also reference that, you know. I, we as a county try to offer dispatch, I mean, there are, part of the new building is so that there is an opportunity to dis. Expand, it's putting in infrastructure, so we could expand dispatch services to other communities. We have the capacity to do that, should that. And I think it's been historically and continue to be the sheriff's department's efforts to bring on. If communities need to come on county dispatch to try the, you know, at the best to accommodate. Is that fair to say, Sheriff?
Absolutely. I mean, you know, if you look at the big picture, I mean, this new building's gonna open up. A, a whole new world for the sheriff's office or any department that's, that's going over there. I mean, we will never, we will never, ever. Let law enforcement, our law enforcement partners down when it comes to it. It's something, if a town wants to come over. When we get into the new building, there's something that we can discuss, absolutely.
But I will, I, I, I'm gonna give you credit though, for again, looking for ways to bring revenue, so.
I, it seemed like it was an unfair uh situation. I get your opinions, I know that there's. Some history on this and um, that's fine, this was a discussion. Uh, I have my eyes on it. Uh, I'll continue to look at this as we move forward. So if there's no more discussion on that. Uh, we can move on. Uh, public comment. Uh, there's one unknown telephone there. And I'm gonna guess it might be.
Incoming Commissioner.
Incoming Commissioner Tom Char- Char.
You got it. Good morning, everybody. Well, I missed being there, but I'm just looking at my phone and I've been on here for. You guys got a long meeting, when I get back there, I'm hoping I'm gonna shorten them up. Anyway, a couple of quick things. I do wanna clarify one thing, I know earlier in the meeting it was brought up about a credit card and some stakes. From a former commissioner, I want the record to show that I wasn't the stake guy. I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't the stake guy. A couple of things, just real quick on the.
Did you partake in one of those stakes?
No, I wasn't, I was nowhere, I was in, I think I was in the, I was in the pool. A couple of things, just real briefly, real briefly on the. I wanted to just chime in on the dis. Yeah, exactly. I wanted to just chime in on the dispatch, so I actually was. A sitting commissioner at the time that we decided to bring that forward and if. Uh, history reminds me what we did, we thought we'd do seventy five cents for police and a dollar and a quarter. For police and fire per population of the towns. And if you guys wanna fill up the Hilton with a bunch of guys. With guns and fire extinguishers, bring that forward, you know, and it needs a lot of work, because we had a lot of people. Really upset, and I'll be the elephant in the room, some people don't really like our dispatch. And you're not gonna change them, you're not gonna change them, although I think we have the best one that they can have for free. Some are not gonna come there with you charging.
That's not a very high bar.
No, I'm being honest, I'm being honest, I. Yeah, I, I'm being honest with you, some of them don't, um, and as far as the prosecution part, you know. Some small towns, my town is sand down alone. We actually have our own private, uh, uh, uh. A couple that actually, uh, two people that actually do our prosecution, my chief, Joe Gordon, likes the one-on-one. With them, although Pat, he likes Pat and, 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 uh, Commissioner Quill knows what I'm talking about, we have, we have an agency that's been with us. I've been a commissioner seventeen years and I sign the check once a month for him and they do a great job and the chief does not want it, he. Loves Pat group, Pat's group and everything, but sometimes people's minds are made up that that's the way it is. But it needs a lot of work and I do appreciate, I'm conservative and love to save money, but I think that's. You wanna fill that Hilton, Hilton up with guys with guns and fire extinguishers, you bring that forward and I guarantee you'll fill that room. Um, the other thing is yesterday when I was going to the butcher shop, and it was my old credit card, by the way, um. I went by the old, the old senior class was occupied, so I saw a couple of handicapped vans in front of there. In front of the building and I decided to walk in there. And I walked in and lo and behold, there's a company in there called Kimmy. K I M I Nickel Center, and I went in there and the place was full and. Uh, I sat down, I talked with Adam Jackson, the CPS coordinator, and I did receive a call this morning. From the CEO that I wanna talk to him and bring them forward to you folks, but they do do adult medical daycare. Um, they are, they're just starting, but it's a great, their website is kinda crappy, but. If you look at them, uh, they're starting, they have a woodworking shop and they're very exciting to go in there. And they're excited to see me, when I said, there's a possibility I could bring you the three people that might be able to help you, being you three commissioners, so. Um, I'll follow up on it, but if anybody wants to poke their head in there, but it's called Kimmy, K I M I Nickel Center. Making the Difference is the logo, uh, really exciting there. Uh, I'll be honest, it's not. It's uh, we're senior classes over by Prime Butcher. Yeah, it's the, it's where senior class was, but they occupy, they took their space. They took their space, so. Uh, it's, it's exciting, they are a five oh one C group. Um, I'll talk to them and I'd like, and if you commissioners, obviously you can go knock on the door, they don't make cookies like the last group, because that was the first question. Yeah, I do still have some, you're right, you're right, Brian. So I'm, I'll get some more info, but I, what I'm gonna do is, you know, uh, I'm gonna try and get. A little more information, then I'm gonna try and get them to reach out to the commissioners and come in and see you folks, but it was very exciting. They have a woodworking shop, it's amazing, but, but they're more challenged than the groups that we're accustomed to, but they are. Uh, they do the, the driving for them, they do do rock and hear people, so. It was pretty exciting and they were excited to obviously hear my side of the story, so I'll keep you guys in, in for that.
Thanks for sharing that.
Say that again? Yeah, yeah, they're, yeah, they're nice, yeah. I'll keep you guys informed, I'll, I'll keep you updated, you know my, you know the heart I have for adult medical daycare, so I'll stay on it. And everybody have a great day.
Great.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. All right, with that, I'll take motion to move into our non-public session.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're in non-public.
Yeah.
Well, we're back from our non-public session and Commissioner Coyle has a motion.
I move, we had two non-public sessions, I moved to seal both those minutes indefinitely, because it could adversely affect the reputation of a. Individual other than a member of this board.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, we seal those minutes and uh accept the motion to adjourn?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I apologize, I'm just trying to figure out the direction that we got from the sheriff's department for an update. Um, you both want me to say nothing, or because we just sealed everything, so I'm not supposed to say nothing to them or update them on.
I don't, um.
Any conversation? I just wanna make sure that I got it clear, you know what I'm saying?
I think the, the discussion point, which we can say is that there's just, um, we. Found that there's no issues and that it was simply a, um, just lack of commu- a confusion or a miscommunication.
That's fine, but you're, you're both okay with me relaying that versus.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't.
I just wanna make sure I don't give a step anything.
No, not for anything. I, if, you know, I keep saying, if they had questioned, you know. So we are out of, we're in public and so, um, I think we've addressed it.
Yeah.
And I moved to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are in adjournment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.